Alright, I lost us in the thought, so. Go ahead, start. Also, like, try to stop.
One mission. Give this call.
Okay. Before we get started tonight, I will move back to your. And also to remind you that our meetings are recorded. And I know with some subjects come strong language. So if we could please try to start. I can begin that way for every reason. Let's start out with a roll call. Mike Peter. John Anderson.
Here.
Daniel Foster.
Here.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Daniel is joining us here at the internet. Mark Kelly, here. Gary Nelson.
Here.
Tommy Smith.
Here.
And Barbara Tucker.
Here.
We'll have our review and approval of minutes from April 13 meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to work through them? And do we have a?
Oh.
Motion to accept the, do you have a second? And we have a vote to break the case. That's so. And I. We can have a solid. Under our new business, public hearing for current stuff meant to be official zoning atlas resulting from A1 egg preservation C1 general commercial zoning district. For approximately plus or minus 24 acres of big land located at the north most intersection of popular avenue in US Highway 20. Joe, do you have a solid position?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Johnson, planning and zoning administrator, presenting this request for zoning atlas amendment or rezoning. Advertise for this public hearing is for place for Dutch messenger, the David Leader, and the Gower News. Property owners within 500 feet of such a property will notice by now. At the April 13 planning and zoning commission meeting, the commission continued the added to a future meeting date to add a traffic impact study compared for proposed use. Which is 9,750 square foot travel center or convenience store with food and gasoline sales. As early residents had concerns that may impertain to traffic and safety related issues. Based on the results of this study, staff has added the following conditions of approval. If you want to go to slide it over there. Allison. This letter added other lines will then create these to report conditions prior to lot of time with convenience store fuel pumps, the avenue shall construct. Improves to the intersection of popular avenue and US Highway 20. Said improvement shall be subject to review and approval by the Iowa Department of Transportation Western County engineer. The second condition prior to occupying the convenience store and fuel pumps, the avenue shall construct improvements to popular avenue. From US Highway 20 to a minimum of 100 feet. Beyond the avenue's property line. Said improvement shall include grading and paving and all ancillary costs. Said improvement shall be subject to review and approval by the Western County engineer. The avenue shall reverse reimburse the Western County Secretary of Labor Department for all issue costs of maintenance and prepare for improved road. And the final condition was that construction is not commenced and will require early improvements by December 31st of 2020. The avenue shall require to solicit the planning and zoning department petition for a zoning atlas amendment or rezoning to the first zoning designation of C1 to A1. Said petition shall be submitted for later in January 15, 2023. What I'd like to do right now is go ahead and turn it over to the applicant. They have a few things they want to talk about before I go ahead and. And turn this over to Mr. Tony Gustafson, who's our district elevator chair, talking about the traffic impact report. So go ahead, Mr. Stone.
Actually, Mr. Stone, yeah, I wanted to speak just about overall design of the structure. So I have a couple of design plans that I've got those. That I've worked out. I'll just talk through it. So the overall design of the structure would be modern industrial with extraordinary good sensory influences, such as the river bank. The primary materials would be wood, steel, stone, polished concrete, so more of a modern structure. The exterior would be like, probably like a black steel with a lot of wood accents. And then interior, what side would be that, there would be an unit store, maybe more of a traditional layout, a regular unit store. The other side would be food service and coffee shop with a balcony meeting space above the coffee shop area. The food service would be fast food, but with a more whole foods approach. It's important to us that the meal help you to eat in that, you know, have like a McDonald's or a, you know, one of these or one of those other kind of ways. Good for people. The meeting space above could be reserved for large events or small events. I think it really enhance the property and make it, you know, something that would be used by community or different things. There'd be also an outdoor patio swimming area that would really capitalize on the space and. Oh, there's. So these are just examples, but. The ones that would be exterior and the ones that would be more like interior kind of concept of design. A lot of windows, a lot of natural light. Some more of the steel, wood, polished concrete floor. Durable, but, you know, attractive. In fact, that's a nice welcome to Western County.
Staff, those recommend approval of the zoning request. As the subject property, which is approximately 24 acres in size, fronts of major arterial. And is located at intersection that runs itself to a higher order intense commercial. Will be given for the variety of uses such as convenience stores and gasoline sales. So with that, I will go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gustafson, who's our district elevator engineer at the Iowa Department of Transportation. And before I go ahead and change slides, Allison, put up a couple of there's there's so we can talk to those for words.
Hello, folks. Putting for the tour, the tour was requesting for traffic impact study for the intersection of popular avenue. Set request of Mr. Stone. The report was put together according to the DOT requirements for improvement of the prime. So our process involved performing a traffic analysis to see what the volumes are today. And then coordinated with the DOT to identify some technical concept for 2020. As relates, as it relates to the development of Mr. Stone proposing for a close fire. Upon some coordination of the DOT, we arrived at two, two concepts. A standard accurate intersection, which is this concept, this is a hard cut intersection. That you see here in front of you sometime in particular, the taper intersection. Upon analysis of the RCA and standard intersection. It is our recommendation to go through and do an RCA design. On the premise of a couple of factors, one of which being. Level certified by RCA as a relation to the standard. As it is today, that intersection receives a level of B service, which is very, very good, a very level service for an intersection. Looking out to whole bill plus 20 year note with his requirement of the DOT. For analysis purposes. A standard intersection would act as a level of service. And RCA would receive a level of B, so it was very similar traffic patterns that's there today. Q and A is another thing to look at, so how do you feel they're able to stack and move through the intersection without the lines getting long and everything. Through to official conflict. There are no Q and A issues along 20. A standard intersection that provides some Q and A issues along Southbound Popular Avenue that's turned both left and right off 20. Those Q and A's become too long and actually block the proposed intersection with the travel center, industrial warehouse. Which creates issues. As I mentioned, our recommendation is to go with the unsigilized district across the U-turn RCA intersection. I'll let Tony Gustafson play a D C if he's got any other comments to add.
Yeah, so as Cody said, this is a required traffic impact study is brought up at least across state, you have a team that follows their reviews. All types of accidents, other experts of whether it's all great trip iteration done by the press, yeah, totally can compare with different scenarios. We review everything that they did here. Everyone came back with concerns, you know, there were some conflicts that were corrected. And we approved the following reports. Now, the next step for us is to do the plans, to make sure that their, their plan, they'll submit for us. That approval will, what we threw it out with our other committee that will review. Final point, the task of that person. So again, this, the RCA prevents someone going across the intersection from the side road. And either going straight across, take your left, they got to separate their field of vision, they just concentrate on one direction of traffic. It's RCA. Standard intersection, you don't know, they can just pull you into an intersection. But the conflict points, you know, trip, you have that, you know, we will leave you decided at a four point speed. So. I was just, for instance, I was coming back from a college this weekend at that uncontrolled intersection on Highway 20. You know, no RCA median, the semi, just, he went through the median, you know, without, because I had to stop and he was halfway through the other set of lanes to get the lights on. So here, that would happen because we're forced, you would have to take a right turn. Well, down the new RCA and then when you. So that's the best major, this part of the tricks movements was to list the drivers' categories one direction traffic. So if you're going out and taking your right to go, go west, you know, you want to go east. You have to capture the pulse of traffic, buzz down. Have a median, just type capture the pulse on these problems, wanting to put it in there. So the much simpler maneuver for everyone is by separating, separating the traffic, you can just be. These are the RCA's, you know. Not anything like that was not only, they're, they're, they're raised in the lower states, so those data. Starting, you got to have, you got to have.
So you're making the assumption that the people, the drivers in Iowa would be like, they would say, this, that we would adapt to this RCA?
Everyone, you know, whoever's changing traffic patterns, you know, they're too little, there's a learning curve, kind of what you need from. If it's doing, you know, four lane, you know, the intersection and that risk is always a learning curve for everybody. Hopefully, yeah, I would, I would stick to that to this time, so. Just like, it's not random, it's just one axle.
Curious about though, because it's restricted, let's say a semi is trying to go south, wanting to get into the travel center. I mean, they're not going to be able to come down there, turn north across intersection, right?
Coming from the south?
No, so they're coming straight from the south and they're going to straight north, so they're around the south. Yeah, so they're headed north down on this ground, because there's farmers down that area. So they're headed north down, well, and they're restricted, right? So they can't come straight across, so.
But they were right.
Yeah.
You know, travel. You know, a few seconds in that, including adults had a turn maybe to use the RCA.
Are they able to, a semi, look around there?
Yeah. So they, you know, they put, the employees, the staff that put turn movements on those RCA design. They made the media very wide, allowed semi, they take advantage of all that meat. Also, springing to think of, it's a whole assured, it's a show outside showed was the science we used to make that.
Couple of questions, Charlie. On, on the RCA. Does this interchange involve flashing lights? Any special signals, anything to alert the public to that's either other than standard signage?
Well, the yellowy signs specifically for an RCA, we don't like to put up flashing yellows, flashing lights, but there is, is an issue, is a safety issue. So we're hoping the safety issue here, we don't want to overhang the side flashlights that everywhere across the station, people will go on. So, you know. Hopefully, I don't anticipate issue here, well, the sign, it's a lot of returns, working away on experience. So a left turn, I'm out leaning into the, into the side road, which you can just have to watch one direction traffic. We wouldn't, we wouldn't issue to put any kind of flashing lights. Remind, you know. So I was looking at, would we, I would just, well, that's considered, I believe, any question?
The reason I ask that is I know now I have an important moment. With the. All of the new calls that are on here, they weren't speaking of their, and for the flashing lights. So this is a very strange, and that's another question, I didn't see any mention of a warning speaking of that.
Yeah, and, you know, it's still a wide open area, people drive at a speed they're comfortable, so, you know, low speed max, unless it's a, there's a real need to do it. Different inches speeds, they should be, maybe there's traffic on, on US 20, you know, types that don't make sense. There's folks that are, well, I basically, this doesn't, doesn't make any sense. So, again, this won't be on the table.
Well, the traffic coming from the west. You got, every traffic, the whole lines are somewhat not necessarily full, but busy. And then you've got four or five cars on the same right side of the top of this. Thing. There's no turning right. Right? So you've got to stop that inside, they've got to slow down, make their left hand turn.
Always, there's a luck, luck in front. Both directions. That's what you're asking, officer. Got a little corner, you can see the dash line, that's the breaks of two main line. These spots raining to then left up for a solid bar to left turn. It's all the way in traffic. We're not stuck in the three lane here, but if they are going for a turn, they can.
How far back to that, that part of the RCA, how does that work with that hill, there? If you're traveling to that east.
Which of those, if you see that eight seventy five, that's five hundred feet. So I would look like it's about eight hundred feet or so. So we'll yell, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's about that, maybe closer.
What's the safety distance the semi has to slow down to make that, to make that exit? When you're in the fast, in the fast lane?
Well, it's not, it's not about the speed, it's probably around, oh, I would, I would say it's probably six hundred feet.
And that's five hundred feet?
Close, close to a thousand.
He can run sixty five before he. That's it, he's going to turn sixty five.
Normally, you see, normally you see that people just slow down to house route before they enter into the turn lane. Well, they're going sixty five, she's, I've decided to make that a new rule to that left turn, they work fifty five, it's a little long.
But he's in the, he's in the fast lane.
Is there going to be any visibility of this land that if this. Gives the crest of the hill, or is it going to be designated or anything of this type of finding?
But the current means by, I hope the president.
You're coming up with.
President, I hope so, yeah, national people. See, if there, everyone's side is looking to the west, doing some traffic. Place one of my cross over there.
And you can see it though, like, coming up the crest of that hill. That, that's what my main concern that I have is to have a blind corner. Hill, and if you have a semi, it's going to be slowing down, coming to the fast one. Or from the sole lane over the fast lane. Right, over that lane, that's where we. Right, over that lane, that's where we're caught.
Shouldn't, of course, yeah, if you're a truck driver, you even have four seconds to call. These are, some may care.
But you've got cars, you know. See if they're also wanting to be signage further right to the west, letting.
I don't know, I have, I have, I have control, we have, going in the arcades on Iowa, I have to see what kind of, will they have a sign flying? Which part of the rating needs to be given, sign flying also, so, you know. So we've got, we've got a lot of the next sign, it's fair.
There's a, are you putting vacillator lanes when you're coming from the east? Would you go put, um, vacillator lanes? Off the main traffic, so you can slow down, it'll make that turn north?
Yeah, they're going to get that all, no intersection, they actually, probably all of a sudden, there's left turn and left turn also.
Tony, my first thought was drawing, my first concern is the partners in the area. And as a partner myself, I don't know, maybe that's why I asked my first one. It's how do I get across here, back over there, or combine, or character drivers? And thoughts on that?
Who would this? You have to, you have to make it just like any other vehicle, you have to make the, you put the arcad over. You have to take a right, you go over to that left turn, like, go over. If you're coming from the south, you're going northbound, you have to take a right, you just follow me, just go over to that left turn, as soon as you can. And then take that turn to go back to the, back to the west.
Isn't farm equipment prohibited on that stretch of twenty going down? Straight across intersection, it would satisfy, it was that shorter distance, this would be, this particular design. That's what's going to happen is that will take, that farm driver, basically, to down.
Again, they've got a good opportunity, you have to, you're driving, you're driving with that on, a turn, they give an extra little bit, you got to avoid it. Everyone, it's good, farm equipment on, near state or a long stretch of, you know, relatively, you can access only, all the way, not put it. So Iowa, you just don't ever go to miss anywhere.
Do you know, okay, what you just said, like, Iowa, is that why we don't have this particular type of intersection, right? So wow, would that be a, I mean, other states have it, but does that have any, does that come into play at all?
Well, I mean, I just, you know, we had the other, other locations, you know, you could put that up there, probably, you know, arcades or. Obviously, just a path of one traffic signal, and we're close, other, other locations, we're probably, it is traffic signal, closing the urban area. So it's just, I mean, it's a safe intersection, it just separates the, the, the intersection, to get more traffic, auto lanes. People, somebody's getting out of the first set of lanes, and they're, they're way over there, they're thinking about, you know, it's a small percentage, that's small percentage, causing a traffic crash. So at least, you basically just eliminate that, that, that crash, the turn, you know. They only have to worry about one set of lanes, one set of traffic.
I never heard of this traffic study, I thought we were going to hear something about up to date, how much traffic we're actually having. I mean, it's, when I live in a, I look for one every day.
You can share it.
You, you have got updated one?
Yeah, clearly did.
Because I'd never seen, since last day, well, since last meeting, I thought I would see, you know, they put them roll, or the things out there in California. I never seen it, I drive every day, I just.
There were real cameras, kind of off the side.
That was a week, a week's worth of just one day.
It was about two days.
Two days only, it, in like a week. We can't do so much more with your Friday nights, you know. I would think, you know, weeks were, get a good average, average, how much traffic that road is.
Do you think that happens, do they take every four years?
About four years, that's, that's a long time, especially since Highway 20 has opened up over to the west. So that traffic was really picked up last. So I don't know if you got a good accurate, with two days, taking the number count, should have did a proper, like, week. You could have averaged a thousand, and if it's one of the last four days, or four years, that actually really picked up.
If, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to put you up, just maybe what we're talking about. If you have additional questions for the, I'd like you to answer. Cody, if you have that information, you could come up.
Yeah, dude.
And, and I'm sorry, sorry, your name is?
Tracy Faye.
Tracy Faye, okay, I'm sorry, I don't remember being very good.
I'm the, probably the one who affects it, first place in the north, that.
Okay, okay. We have a question under, Tracy has some questions. What do you have? Excuse me?
Can you give me a microphone, please?
There is it?
Yes, guys.
It's like, it's all right, I have a big mouth, but I just reject the, um. Cody, if you've got those numbers, or can you share them? Because I'm sure there are people that are here, they're reading about seeing traffic study, because holes can have. And we can't, we're selecting, kind of, with those numbers. And then we have some questions, I know we in the courtroom is a little not helpful, but we can maybe, uh, we can answer something. And then, because we do want to get your questions on record, we want to make sure that we can ask these professionals.
We get here a little bit of that, okay. So we reported that, uh, on May 12th, and, and the, the periods that we look for, for design or end structure. Your peak volumes in both AM and PM hours, which in, in this scenario was, uh, two, seven fifteen, eighteen, fifteen AM. And then again, went three forty until, uh, uh, three thirty until four thirty PM. Uh, and that's dictated by the count data, just the highest one hour, uh, in both AM and PM. And then, uh, the data shows N O P hours. The. The eastbound through on US 20 is three hundred and sixty vehicles within that one hour AM. And then the westbound twenty is four hundred and four vehicles within that AM, that westbound. And the PMP, it picks up a little bit. And the eastbound is a four hundred and thirty vehicles, and westbound, uh, three hundred and seventy vehicles. And then, studying all through all the data, then there's, there's every fifteen minute windows, we, we generated counts. In the, in every fifteen minute period throughout that day, and we have, was that data available, so that one sort of, over totally, or incorporated. So the, the total, and. So the total on eastbound time is four thousand two hundred and fifty-four vehicles within the period. And westbound twenty is four thousand three hundred and thirty-one vehicles within one day.
I'm sorry, is your name?
When did it explode, they, uh, we think that was a town that, we did it a little bit. It's always.
I have a question, someone asked before, and said their name, or his name. I, I, yes, I would like them to, it's more that we have someone up here, I don't know if you can use, like, all the board, they want to come up. Yeah, if you would come up and with your question, sir.
I'm all right.
Your question, okay. Because, because we want your questions, this is the time, this is the time to ask, we want to make sure that we, you know, we've got the professionals here. So that we can answer these questions, right?
I'm going to have, just, have my way to Tracy, for the west. Um, so when they, you know, they closed, and probably this lowest leading, like, yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and all the people who travel back and forth. They're going to be doing a movie, and we actually, good, yeah.
Is, is there a way to, to, to do the travel study? I mean, I think, I appreciate the question, because that was one of my questions. If we were to do the same traffic study in, say, October, would you see a difference in the count of data once more?
So generally, when you count your data, you want it to be on a representative day that count data is to represent. So there are sets of things, weekend peaks, um, and weekend volume. Uh, but generally, you're, you're designing to a standard day of use. Uh, so we try to exclude days that we know there's an event in the area or something like that, that that will bump up count artificially. Uh, or Wednesday, so generally, you're at your work week, it's a typical flow.
Can I ask a question? I did quite a good study on Tracy Faye. Did you say your study was from eight thirty to nine thirty?
It was through the daytime.
I just tried to. I thought it was, are these hours that?
Was, he, he got, so he had the highest one hour window, he has the highest one hour windows.
So you did a twenty program, that, that is, okay. Do you do that around?
Yeah.
Four hundred and something people around?
Yes.
So how about with my math, four hundred people, minutes? Uh, fifty people, I think what the minute, couple of this, one by that. I just kind of love that. We got, imagine that, you're, 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 by, some of them hard to get out of, like, I just, sure.
Sure. And that's existing traffic, and then when you do your projections, what do you base your projections on? For the, the travel center?
Yeah, so, uh, generally, you look at a road factor on stage numbers, as just general population increase and all these other things. And that's about two percent annual, is what you use. And then we use a tool called a generation annual, which is an engineering document that looks at any given, uh, structure. And they give you a, a assumed traffic volume. I mean, we need those sites, um, on fact, so it could be a road square footage. And in case of the travel center, it's, it's tiny pumps that are airborne, site. Um, and then we project it out, the additional, uh, count, uh, due to those, those facilities in our, in our analysis.
Okay. That makes sense, so. That, that was something when I read the study, I was, you know, it's one thing to go out and count existing, but when you're projecting forward for road. I don't know, I'd be happy to use it to, to, it was a little bit too, I didn't have a lot, so, just to make sure that I knew where you were going for that two percent road.
Yes.
Jump back from C O T, how do you feel about those numbers? As far as, you know.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my first start, yeah, presented to you guys, you know. Well, for this job, we've got forty all the reviews, you help with, you know, we've got, we've got central office alone. So we have a, we have office staff, we've got a safety bureau, or, or kind of data bureau, or design bureau. They, they review these all across the state, so they were, they provided comments, ability, getting their staff, told the staff, that some of them were addressed. So that's why I'm here.
So what's your A B, seven hundred cars per hour? You can go ahead with that.
That's kind of why we got to the circle, exactly, that's where I guess. I'm always, that's why, I think, ahead, not like my daily, what we use to count.
That's like our last, we needed that, so, you know, it was just.
Yeah, do you have a question?
We didn't hear anything, nothing to share.
I didn't come back, sorry.
So, yeah, so I had to mention, like I mentioned earlier, we have our experts in our central office, that we do these cross on back state. So we're looking at something in eastern Iowa or something near, something in central Iowa, so they, they do, they write the comments, the coding, and then. There's been changes in the median, and then, you know, this, this, uh, captain back, so it's been approved by the department. So we're, we're not building numbers, results, and level service, that's a full belt out, it's twenty forty one, I think, report, so. So we want to, again, the next step, like I said earlier, is to do the plans, that was designed, the R standards are around with that. Good second layout, and I'll start with a favor thing for any projects, signs are within the insect's order, if they're sitting properly correctly. So that's our next step, is to, is to do the final plan, for all, for the show.
And might, repeat my question, I, you know, my question was, you know, we're talking seven hundred cars during peak hours, and my question was, if you go down, it's all through a gap.
So I think there are social requires, that's the community, the question, and then I mentioned papers that come out, now, are we following those today?
This, this is just how many cars collide a day, and this was a power, that was a question. So we got numbers here, Sanders, four thousand, that's some, uh, per day. On your, uh, US twenty, yeah, for the X. Development, so that was, also, you know. So in a day, there was four thousand three hundred thirty going one direction, that twenty-four hour period. But we got peak hours, that you want to make sure to handle, which is, which is separate from the car, so. And that was my question, and, and last, a lot of you guys were last, and we just didn't have enough data, and that's why I was stable there. You know, they're here with our, our.
Okay, so if you would come forward, you really want to make sure, like I said, okay, everyone on the rack, please. I have not enough game chances, all right. We've traveled up already today, and I love it, because we're from this year, this year. You guys are thinking about, as I did, as I said today, you don't have to go to the box, you don't have to, this day, where everything come up. There's traffic coming, so you're pulling up, and there's traffic passing, and it's really hard to get over, sometimes. It's true, you've got semi standing, you've got other people coming, so you've got to try to make your way over, try to get to the left turn. There's a lot of traffic, so now people turning to the teens, or all the time, it's just going to create even more. And there's not much, like, if a semi is there, wanting to come in there. And I'm coming out, I want to be set out on the best of the waiting, because they're starting traffic waiting, or second. Wow. I have another question, Cody, or, what's your post here? Any sort of a cost?
Yeah, we, we, so, so reiterating what Cody's saying, but we'll still have to go to the final plan, effort to put the rankings together, quantify what we improve a whole week. But based on the conceptual layout that, that built up, that you're looking at there, it's about nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand? I have some other questions for you, Sean.
That would be the, the bear of the, that, that would be, ever, very, very long.
Do you have anyone else that you want to, to, to receive? Mr. Trump, did you watch any other additional talks? I'd like for the board now to have, please go, oh, I'm sorry, sir, would I come on here and, and, I'll hear your question?
I don't know, I don't know where you, this.
Microphone here, and you can just say, yeah, over, please.
Correct, sir, I grew up in that area, just a mile, past all the border, that borders out.
I'm third to live on my house from there. My concern is out there and that, I mean, it's basically safety aligned for the highway. But also, you're going out there, you're talking about flipping up a facility and a hotel and all this other stuff. And there's no like city water or sewer systems or nothing out there. Does anybody have an economic study? What is going to do to our water take a lot there for all the residents who live there? For their water supply and stuff? And running from something, the trash that'll probably be generated if you ever drive by Walmart looking for it. You're out there. I mean, that's all going to wind up in Hollywood, correct? Through the roof. Just my concerns there. I want to know if they've done any studies on how that's going to affect.
So. Do you have any research on that?
Good question. There are no, there's no particular study that's required. Mr. Stump is required to really pass an adequate public facilities test. And this is one of these tests that is tonight, the transportation test. The other one is water, sewer, public safety, and so forth. So we've been in contact with public safety, local fire department to make sure that they're responding to this site that wasn't worth it. Seeing the waters across the street. Contacted, it's in the water, make sure that they can provide water service. Mid America Energy has contacted, yes, Mr. Stump has some expenses to give these utilities there. And they have to be adequate to serve the facility. So this will be a test that they'll have to go through the process and reviewed by staff amongst other agencies to make sure that all those are in place before that comes into issue. So. There's no study that's required. Yeah, there's some requirement. So we want to make sure that public services get provided in the back.
But for folks that are here, that sounds like an adequate back type situation. Right? I mean, why? Why would we ask that? Because if a vote for the regional candidates, then these folks have no idea. What's going to happen in that situation?
Correct. And we've had discussions with Mr. Stump about the, about having the public facilities and making sure that those get, you know, those get there and make sure that they understand what the costs are and what needs to be recorded. These well work that issues. Yeah.
You can just stay there, sir. I have a couple other questions there. Okay, so there were more comments?
I guess I have a little more.
And I, I didn't hear the answer. And one, I think it was a good comment the other day. I haven't heard any answer on that. Is, you're trying to, you're trying to get twenty four acres commercial, but commercial. And truck stop is four. I didn't understand. I haven't heard what. Still trying to get twenty four, but it was down to four.
That was my exact next question. Be my lie. Yeah, I'm, I'm still.
So the proposal is to rezone twenty four acres customized. Yes, and the developed portion is four acres. So you guys, if that's recommendation, is to give us the approval for the twenty four acres, the tax added dust point, the US twenty four, or if it's self commercial use. You can keep your recommendation along and just say, okay, we're only looking at rezoning four acres or the smaller parcel, which is eight point eight acres. But to give the entitlements to commercial general, just make sense for local properties.
Okay.
But yes, those steward. I don't know what we're seeing that's seen as a. This, this is a zoning spot literally right off left, round the road in front of Tracy and mine's house. I don't know if you see this or not. And it says, future stump warehouses. That's the year out right there. The picture that you're going to build a warehouse. Basically, it's not a warehouse on the side mark.
Thank you, Steve.
Based on the point you made, you were right. For course.
So this is just four acres. This is basically coming right by when Phil Stewart's land and then right before the Tracy's house. So do you guys see these pictures?
That's part of the house, yes.
Everything is left coming. Was the lighting in the big house? I got it for the vision. This is all the question they want. Yeah, we're asking these questions to find out what's going on.
You're right. And that's probably one of our worst questions, too.
After you approve of this, do you like it? It's going to happen. I'm just curious about that. What are they going to do for, you know, everything coming into IR? All the yards coming in, all the rest, Tracy yard, like Tracy. Really good question there. Lightning or any order.
Hi, it's Max and last. I just realized it seems like a quite impact on the whole original's residents. And I know that as more we can see the bigger picture of impact that it would have to all residents of our town. And the positive impacts will have on, you know, that complex, that's what we're going to bring in a lot of expectations.
Hi, my name is Lily Testa. We're actually on a tour very busy. I wish David's able to understand. It's an excellent thing to bring to our community. But probably not in that area yet. Just for the simple fact that how unsafe it is. I know it's great. People speak dollar signs to our community. You, beautiful building. I really don't care about a beautiful building as much as I care about everybody's safety. So I really hope we take that into consideration. The lighting, we actually ran over where this space is supposed to be built. And my husband was just going like a golf cart type thing. I will see you on my front porch and he turned the lights on and off. I could see it kind of say, imagine your tall lights out there. And I'm not quite on her feet from that area. What is that going to do for us? I'm going to be a lot piece. Maybe you should move your, move your job. It probably should be a lot cheaper. That's right. Thank you.
Actually, my concerns, right, everybody. We appreciate all the comments. There is a condition of approval that requires Mr. Stump to keep the pokey candle readings at zero of the property. So there's not going to be any lighting impacts from not adjacent to the office. So lighting is a concern to staff, it's a concern to residents. And that gets addressed, the government required to provide a full effort plan. We'll show the lights, exterior lights, and we'll show those pokey candle readings at zero.
Well, I have a position, I guess. I have, I have my plans my back there. So I know that I need to. So it's a concern. At least that part of the structure isn't taking care of in a way that's going to work for everybody. I can walk a bit faster now than I would without a flashlight because there's so much light out of the country. Light is better, of course. So we do understand that concern and we are taking that into consideration.
And most of the lights, you're right.
So I took my morning, I guess, since we hit up all the plans for the year, there was, there was consideration for carnage line. Nothing for the rear. And that's where we have leaves on the other side. And so consideration leads to retaining all the way around situation. Not just carnage. I wasn't going to be off how to talk because, you know, depending on where you're really going for strategy is, that would make a difference. So.
And I understand all those concerns. And I, I know that there are some, there is some validity to them. However, I mean, I think those concerns can be addressed in no way that is, you know, detrimental to everybody at all. And I also think that, you know, you cannot stop progress. And just because a couple of people are impacted and there's change everywhere, that it's hard for people to accept. And I think, you know, sometimes there is looking for your good. And you have to look at kind of how you add the entire family, not just a few people. And I think you also have to consider, you know, that we're going to be, we can to make sure that it happens. That it possibly can.
I'll share some things that I did have. I was in contact, my uncle with. And I'm aware. And so I had R and R, which is when Rosal was come out. And is, Phil's your mother? Phil's with me. Okay, you're here. Phil's, and she's, she's got a letter in here. And he and she had called and asked if it would lower the water levels. And I said, no. And that kind of sets a sitter in our local well guy. He's been used to running their, our land. So he feels it won't lower it. Some advice I'll give Mr. Stump, according to Lynn, if you take well water and use it in business, it's got to test it, test it, test it. Or you don't want to. See, yeah, there's no testing. It's on that. Okay, so this, that's something that I, I learned. You know, then from him, he's very helpful.
I mean, I'm offering all questions. It may take a little longer for me. You would love that it might be, but I'm offering all the questions because this is time to ask them. So. I, I do have some questions for Mr. Stump. And it does concern this lot size. Now, I reviewed the previous meeting. And we did discuss it at the previous meeting. And you had said that it was just going to be eight acres.
And you had, you talked about the relative portion of that eight acres and approximately four acres.
Yeah. And again, we're looking at three different numbers here. I'm looking at twenty four acres on the actual reason of the application. And then I'm looking at eight acres in the middle of the four acres. And I know it's concerning to some of the folks here. We read a traffic study and you see warehouses. And this is, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I was very angry when I read that because I felt like we did this leave the public. And because we did found that information. And frankly, warehouse was going to the commercial mall. That's a completely different side. So. I wouldn't want for the commercial. What I'm playing for right now today is twenty point four acres. I'm playing for a first, our site plan today, and I have a set view. It's eight point eight acres. I, I'm still not able to build it from Jeff is where I actually built the site. And he still got okay. There's other, but instead of eight point eight acres, there's other long fifty acres I would like to go to. All the wearment. I still have to get a little bit of Jeff. Whatever else I need. I'm looking at how big your park. So I'm looking at where I'm working, which gives my cost, so there's some kind of development there. I'm going to be at the county, I'm working decent. I don't have to cost anything at all. I'm going to do that at the county. And then they could use that hopefully and promote that little pokey right down the street. We've got the T P bar right up there, too, which was one of the ones I'm signing there. And in all these trailers, they're not even perfectly good when they're going by. Now, if we can get them to make it to Western County Park, both of them are what we got here. And that's what I have my twenty acres of build. I came to the way to take those twenty acres, that I get my bill with the message of Jeff. That's, that's where I'm just asking. When I'm in build there, when I get my bill, it's my site plan for the eight twenty acres. But I'm asking for the twenty acres so that I commercial, if I do other stuff there, I got to do it. I have my own Jeff, under my process.
You refer to the screen. Are you talking about global work of treatment?
Yes. That's right.
So that's okay. So that's going to satisfy the argument right now. We're not moving up a warehouse across. First. This is, you know, we all understood it. It would be understanding the problem. It's always proposed that way. The warehouse, you know, actually go. It's a serious thing to go across the currents.
I think it's.
No, so that's not the, you know, that's.
So evidently, I just thought from, he is going, going for twenty four.
It would have to do this same.
He says he's got to ask Jeff. I, I don't know who Jeff is working for. I think Jeff is working for Stump. He's not working. I might have employed, worked out.
Jeff, I need clarification.
Sure.
I need clarification for everyone here, myself. What, you're actually talking about the reason?
Well, I can say your, 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 exactly what you're talking about all the time. We look at the air quote, whatever we put the zoning request. The reason. Yes, that's twenty four acres right there. Top minus two parcels. So if you're kind of getting yourself, the traffic impact or whether it just looks at the use of square footage, forget about language. And so, you know, just to get back to talk about the traffic impact. Or yeah, what they did is they put some warehouses in there because they're looking at long term build up. And then looking at, and when they're talking about twenty forty, they want to pull some extra trips in there and say, hey, these improvements aren't warranted. They just go up even further improved. So I have no objection with them incorporating trucks. But you're right, this can be, saying maybe it shouldn't have been added. But what we have here before us is we're zoning for two parcels. The one at the corner is eight point eight acres. And the one, the plus fifty. And then we have a site plan that don't require a site plan to settle with the rezoning. And that's what Mr. Stump has done for this immediate store and gas station. That's approximately four acres of that eight point eight acre site, which is at the corner of Poplar and Lewis Square.
And if we were to rezone the entire four, then there is no public being. There is no submitting a site plan, anything to move in there. That's not commercial. Anything to move in there. And but I think I'm thinking that what some of the concerns are from some of the.
So they have a misconcern, yeah. So they'll have the entire one, so the, the commercial's only district. And warehouse is not permitted to use. It's not a condition. It's not even allowed. So Mr. Stump wants to come back at warehouse. He's, or whatever, he's going to need a rezoning. And that requires that a site plan, which requires to come back to this board for regulation. So we don't have any of that right in front of us right now.
The rest of the twenty four, again, doesn't amount to public comment. It doesn't amount to wearing public after you can zone commercial. Then maybe you go there.
Then, then, through the commercial general zone, permitted uses. If they're conditional uses, they go to the board.
We're going to find your answers.
So as a staff, we don't have any problem with that based on the characteristics of the slant. Like those parcels, a major corridor. And you hear the, the concerns about traffic. Traffic is good, but this is. Heard about. It's increased volumes. Oh, the traffic's bad. This is exactly what Mr. Stump asked. We want these trucks to increase long here for his business. Second, I'm the well looks right. And Steve.
I'm, I'm. I'm not excited about rezoning the entire four. I'm not excited. I'm not excited about putting that to a store supervisor or our resident. Eight. It was, it was. Was it eight years?
No, in our, in our, both sizes, we, both sizes. In our, in our. Twenty four was our field. So we have to change. That's our data. Awesome. I'm just saying that it was added taxes. You know, the, the comment was, okay, for all information. In our meeting here tonight, there was added tax this time, about two plus.
More or less.
So there's no way to leave this.
No, I, I, I believe there's the, the sort of audios, I think it's this meeting when Jeff talks about, you know, when we got this kind of site plan, I'm going to say this is our. That's a common core.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's building for us, which the neighbors have, we have. It's not a meeting like those.
Still, it's a long way from any houses. Sparks. Across.
There's still not a lot of ways to go from.
Oh, yeah, figures.
That warehouse.
We are, we are, you know, it's like. So, twelve hundred feet, and there's, and there's, there's a door, yeah. That's another reason. But I mean, you guys can go ahead and formulate your recommendations, I understand, don't get me wrong, you must control that, you just want to, you have to think in parcel, often legally define that four acres, and, and push that recommendation along with supervisors. We'll see what happens.
For instance, well, you know, and so we rezoned the twenty-four, and we've got, what, approximately forty to more. Um, obviously, I have, I have concerns with neighbors there. Um, there's just a lot of opportunity for growth, which on one hand is a very good thing, but on the other hand, um, I don't think there's a lot of concerns for them.
I think it's, uh, there's two other intersections on twenty, one sixty-nine and the blacktop, that are designed for that thing. And I, I'm talking, okay, I'm talking.
Baseable, please.
Yeah. All right. And these two other spots would suit you very well. And this is spot zoning, this is dumping out the middle of Western County. And I share the same thoughts that these folks have. This, uh, DOT thing is, um, what do you call it, an R?
R cut.
R cut? R cut. I'd like to see another R cut, but in Iowa, well, we would have to look at one in Western County. And I, I find it interesting that DOT is spending the last twenty years undoing some of the mistakes they've already done on that states. And so, uh, I can see where it's going to be beneficial to us to have this mistake made here in Western County. The, um, there's too much traffic, you've got that hill, you've got a lot of speed, and ask people to do this zigzag and stuff, where you got to go against the traffic, get back on where you wanted to go in the first place. Um, you can do that going through Dollar Park, you don't need to do that on the interstate. And, um, your zine of water, I would dare say that they haven't got the supply that you're going to need. They're going to have to run big make for you. And that's going to add to your cost on things. Not that you're concerned about that, but just a point of interest, that, uh, the lines they put out there now aren't going to serve the shield. The, uh, spot zoning is something that, uh, the county supervisors have, uh, went against our recommendation, South Garry. And so they have a lot of things that are recommendation. Uh, we can send it up to the second floor, and they're going to throw it out. They do whatever they want to. And so, we can say to these folks, hey, we're going to do this and that, but when the supervisors get to it, it's all out the window. And, um, everyone should be aware of that. Because, just like I said, that rezoning South Garry, that was spot zoning. And the interesting thing about it, I'm still talking, thank you. The interesting thing about it is, is that, once the supervisor rezoned that area South Garry, then they had to turn on Chase Complan and the zoning. Well, Mr. Johnson, the poster boy for you, Mr. Stump, is, uh, we have to do the same thing here, at the very end of it, we have to, um, the recommendation to the Joseph Complan. So you see, we'll get the cart ahead of the horse. And once again, there's two other spots that are very good for your operation. On one sixty-nine, and then whatever the order of life is. He's been behind you some time, that's why, so, I think that, uh, this area is not suited for what you want to do.
Um, first of all, I think, sorry, I spoke to, uh, I think spots zoning, and it's kind of, it's all about that, it's not true, it's on the major corridor. And it's, I mean, it is, it is right up commercial. Secondly, um, I don't think that our situation, which you compare to any other situation, I don't feel like that's fair. I feel like you're having bad attitude about something that happened in the past, and you're trying to retest that. I don't think that is really what the function of your board is, or your position. Um, I would ask that we all just keep an open mind, and think about the development, and the progress, and the jobs, and the tax dollars. And that somebody's willing to invest a substantial amount of money in our county, as someone local, someone that can give a home call to if you have an issue, not somebody, you know, in another state. Um, somebody that, you know, if it goes to another state, you can invest in it, but you're just doing your monster count. And I think that we, we should have that still in your decision. You know, I, I brought with me tonight, because we, we throw this term spots on the house, so I should, I would make sure to get this somehow in our record. Um, and so, it's funny, something we're ever, we're appointed by the county supervisors, we can figure out with me. Um, you know, we do a lot of this research, so much their time. And we have to look at the entire county, we look at the entire county. And I, I think, um, some of the information that we get comes from out of State University, a extension. And this is a sentence that I'm having a hard time to describe as spots on. And that sentence is, um, uh, however zoning not appropriate is for the financial benefit or individual property owner, but definitely not to surrounding area. So when I read these things, this is where it's an information that we get, um, because let's say, none of us are here, but we have a degree in zoning, or community planning, or anything like that. So, when we read this, that's kind of where I think we're going to have spots on, and Jeff, Jeff now has a certain amount of help, um, whether it's spots on it or not. But the other thing I look at is when we look at our entire comprehensive plan, and we look at, who else is going to look at that comprehensive plan? It's not just us here, people who are looking to invest in Western County, will get on our website, we leave our comprehensive plan. And my concern is that when we show these little spots all over the place, it looks like we don't have a plan. It looks like we're just throwing both of them out there wherever. And Jeff and I spoke earlier about this, um, I, I, I want us to have a complete plan, I want it to look like we do have a plan. And I don't think anybody up here thinks that your project is that. I will say again, I love your project. I, however, for reasons of spots on, think that if we can put that someplace else, apparently, we'll disorient it at our supervisors. Because supervisors were very hard with ethanol plants and solar farms, things like that, I live in areas that they even took me in. I don't feel like they, they worked hard, so they shouldn't have tried to you into the area, what, that would be best. I, I think your plan is great, I think they're actually thinking too small. I think in another area, you could go huge with this. People with this are hoping in another area, so that kind of, I think, is that. And that, it's actually not supposed to be this location.
You feel is the best spot. You've got other spots, let's say ten acres, if somebody wanted to buy there, a ship to sail, if there was a good spot, somebody would have done it.
Well, that's.
So I just, uh, this is a big investment, I'll say a hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, we're talking investment of six to ten million dollars. And you would bring a lot of risk, it's going to be a lot of, and they, not and they, it's going to be a lot of time and effort, we need to watch over this and make sure it is good.
And as a planner, I have to, the entire county, you know, you speak, because of the board, around what's laying on the city for Dodge, and I look at the expansion of the industrial park and everything on the east side of town, and I'm looking at E fifty-nine, and I think, there is an opportunity for a lot of traffic to come out there, because the city is on, the city's looking at it that far ahead. The city is looking at bringing that plan up that way. And that, I think, is going to be the hotspot of the track. That's why I think you, you could go so much further than that. Um, I think your plan, since it's a great plan, I just, I think it could be either bigger and better for the area. Again, I don't think anybody up here is complaining about economic development. We want all the economic development, yeah, but we want to do it in a orderly fashion, makes the county, but not just for today, not just for ten years from now, or for twenty, thirty, forty years from now. So maybe this is the beginning of that, when you can, you can use this as a stepping stone to do additional commercial zoning along that corridor, and, and our R cut could be, you know, a great way to facilitate that.
I have a question for you, I'm trying to interrupt you. Um, has this been, is this land, because I see, you know, according to the traffic study, I would assume that you own these many chunks here. Um, has this been something that has been a long time family owned farm for you guys? Um, I'm just curious, um, if this was purchased and bought for a little time, or if this has always kind of been a factor, Ted? Like, actually, we want to maybe use the development of this, this tree is, I guess, um, historically what it's not.
Enough of this, everything is what I do, and no, it's just a parkway, and Christmas time, I get close. And I just got looking at it, and thinking, gosh, this would, you know, be a good place to put, you know, like a convenience store. Everybody says there's a big gap between market bird and wholesale, there's a, a need for somebody to stop and clean it, we don't have this in Western County. And my traffic count, like I said, it, it warrants, or it could go pretty good with this, but it is going to be a big investment. And it's a risk, and it's going to take a lot of time and effort. So, like I said, it's not been in my family for fifty years or whatever, I just bought it, and I got looking at it, and think, gosh, we could do some of this.
I don't have a rest in board, but I have a cap there. So, I, I have a lot of concerns with this intersection. I do as well, um, I want to reiterate a lot of what you, it's just that, um, I agree a lot with the spots zoning, um, we have had this issue multiple times with the spots zoning, and we need to kind of stick with our comprehensive plan, we are in the midst of redoing our comprehensive plan. We are rolling in and trying to do all that, but we do have to have a plan, and not just here, here, here. We have to have a plan, they have to go, we want to see Western County grow, we, that's the one that counts for. Um, but, besides just the spots zoning, you know, my, my, my biggest concern is the safety right there.
I agree.
I don't, I don't even address it.
There are, my first question was.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. And I understand that this, this R turn is not new altogether, but it's new in the state of Iowa. And where, you know, I would like to see some of that study, that thing brought in, that it has worked on something similar to this, with a hill, uh, basically a flying hill. See, it is, if you've got a lot of traffic coming out, you've got semis that are turning there, because it's just like, um, Mrs. Jacob said, she's coming out there, and she's wanting to turn, and you've got a couple of semis that are sitting there too, and we're telling her, can you help? You know, that's one of the concerns, I know we don't like here, lots of the others that we had, but regarding the one that was in my area, it didn't happen, because there was also a flying hill right there. And it was a major safety issue. And I call this kind of the major safety issue. I have a family, my family is full of cars, semi cars. And this is a concern, because you get traffic, and you get agriculture out there, there is a concern for safety. I want to keep everybody alive and safe, I don't want to have somebody coming out with their kids either, uh, somebody died at that corner. You, you can't, you cannot foresee that, but it's like, I would like to see a little bit more on these R turns, and see just how safe they really are, and are they really as well. You know, being this would be the first one in the state of Iowa. I'm curious, I want to know, and if they are good, then are they going to do more of that within the state? How, how, um, how accurate are they, how well are they, I know when the roundabouts first came, everyone was, you know, completely against them, I think a lot of people got used to them. I'm using them, and I really like this a lot, with the four-way style. It's change, change takes time. And so, you have to learn to accept change. But we also have to learn to accept a comprehensive plan, and you have to learn how we accept a plan, we have to go within order. Um, everything kind of just has its place, and everything has to kind of work in, in, and you have to see the big picture. And, you know, your plan, which you got all the work that you have, is phenomenal, and you're right, there is nothing in Western County along Highway twenty, and it is desperately needed, and it would be great to have. You know, it's, even if it was, on one of your other sections that you had down there, I understand there's really not an intersection that's right there. Um, but it's just, I do, I just, I have that safety concern, it's one of my biggest concerns that I have. But your other parts of the plan, I think are awesome, I mean, it'd be just awesome for the county to have. Just struggling to get over that one part. As well as the spots on the top. Yeah, the, the spots on the issue, I agree. And we kind of touched on this before, the fact that we have our, our zoning pass, we have our future land use pass, and then we have the plum plant, and the plum plant, it's got a management plan. And, in my opinion, the, the plum plant is the big overview of what we hope the county will make. And I feel that this rezon request is bypassing the future land use plan, and going right to the plum plant. And usually get to say, hey, this is one of the allowed uses in here, so let's go ahead and do this. Well, it goes right past the future land use. And my concerns with that is that it sets precedent for everywhere else in county, where plum plant is that particular shade and color for, for, for uses. What does it do then? What precedent do we set? Well, might pass that future land use plan, and we go right to the plum. Again, I don't matter, I'll disagree with this, but it's still something as zoning board member that we have to think about. Because when the experts comes in with a rezon issue that is completely out of line, and wants to use that same excuse. Then you have to hear that same, and you have to make a decision. But we, but, but we set that precedent, that's the problem, the same with the precedent, I agree with you. Lots of, once you have it out, but you still have to, like, hear that separate, separate issue.
This is, yeah, this is where we're going to disagree on precedent, and every case is unique in different, so the set of precedents, I would argue, is. Consider it all, there's other cases of that, that, you know, want certain uses, and, and again, it's not spot zoning, unless it's based on the characteristics of the land. It's fronts of major arterial, which runs itself to commercial use. We're not in the middle of a cultural zoning, putting in a spot, yes, that's spot zoning, there's, there's characteristics there that do not complement the use. What complements is use is that, I wrote twenty-four, and that totally takes that away from spots. So, I respect your opinion, your opinion, and your recommendation, we'll report to the board supervisors. And if you want to use spot zoning, and you want to do pauses for this, then, you know, I'll respect that, that for us.
The definition, I don't know, in county attorney, has a big, long, wordy, uh, description. When I look at, with the description of spot zoning, I think you can pick any sentence out if you wanted to, and say, well, it's probably this. And it's a curse to be, being a same house on that too. I, I'm just going by what I said, but I'm reading what, what my knowledge is, and what I learn, I feel that this is spot zoning. And to me, except we have personal zoning, we have personal zoning areas, uh, when you talk about characteristics, there's models there, there's, throughout. Um, I, I look at, I look at what happens if somebody comes up and says, I would like an industrial somewhere else, I could be a little more sorry. You know, where's your recourse there? You know, that, that those are the kinds of things that can happen, well, that is planned, but we have to look at that, not just as one instance. If we look at it for a while.
Get looked at for a while, perhaps, throughout the entire county. So. In it works. Sir. Come up to the podium, please, say your name.
Mike Pearson. I'm a neighbor, and I'm for this project. I think we've done what was set for it, but this is a risk to manage. You can argue any situation, any intersection, anything you want, you can get killed, pulling out of your right. I've seen, you know, there's always risks. What we're going to do is manage that risk. Nobody really stumped the professionals here, and everybody's trying to kill these smart guys and make things personal, this doesn't have to be a personal goal, you have to focus. So they can jab at Ann or John or anybody else here, this absolute childish nonsense, okay? For a board member to act like he did is even worse. Nobody should be treated like that, nobody should even act like that. That's the thing, I have a lot to say, but I'm going to just keep most of us to, to the business of this, okay? Uh, spot zoning, as we know, is a term that's thrown around, that's can be loosely threaded there. You can drive around this county, you can make arguments about spot zoning characters. From white transfer to county shit, to anything, anything that is not in the city, you can consider spot zoning that is not a residence or a home here, okay? So, let's get real about this. This, front plaza, whatever, they're taking the risk. Let them take it, who cares? If he wants to spend money to do it, don't worry about the other factors. Let's professionals worry about the safety of the traffic. I agree with that, you know, I mean, I really do. If they need it to be as safe as can be, let's just leave it, that's where I believe it is. I don't know that the board's reality, are we in the case, why not to do this to everybody? I, I, I'm really confused, I think you guys should throw in information, discuss it, I, you know, everybody's pretty open, maybe I get upset, but. Let's figure out a way, how can we do it, okay? Let's say, for, let's not resume, let's not get into twenty-four acres, let's write your recommendation to the E P. Let's move forward, let's have progress in the county. You know, I, just to say no to say no is what I see here so far, and I, I think it's, uh, I think it should be given a real consideration. Not, because nobody's going to be happy, okay? So, you know, I mean, if they get it, Tracy's not going to be happy, if they don't, he's not going to be happy, you know? I don't feel anybody here is working for anybody, that is nonsense in my mind, complete nonsense. Uh, I think we all have the codes, we should all figure out a way to make this. Okay, you're not going to like the little things about this, you're going to make it, um, I love that. I did, I've been to this, right, you know? But if he's doing the steps that he needs to do, that he recommended already, I don't understand how it can get gotten tonight. If it's being safe by the D O T, this water table and all this stuff, that's nonsense. That, that all goes through a different process, and, you know, we do have a lot of processes for him to do this, there's a mountain of processes. And I'm not even sure he can get through it, that's not my problem. You know, I would love to see something like this now, I would love to use it. I farm, I drive, I ride by semis, I think it'd be great. Is it a little awkward, is it a little different than what we're used to, yeah, but that's called change. You know, let's have some change, you know? It doesn't have to be, you know, a horse above you, or those days by the old projects. You know, so let's, let's figure out a plan that works, I think he's presented a plan that does work. Uh, if it's the, the D O T is not going to allow unsafe actions. The county is not going to allow dumb sewers out in the field, destroy people's drinking water, and flood. There are procedures and steps to take care of this, and we, we just have to mitigate all the risks involved in progress. Not everybody's going to like it. And I, I just think that we should consider to, uh, give it this, uh, reason there. So I got to. You're welcome.
You know, the D O T, um, I don't know if anybody remembers this or not, um, years ago, when I talked about this, uh, the, uh, radio station was shooting out here, and there was a brush made on person there, killed at that intersection. And so the D O T came in, and we had to change, we had to change that intersection all around and make it safer. And after they did all that, I think since then, there have been possible free people go at that intersection. So I get to the D O T tries to do the same thing. Well, Mike is saying, yeah, they're going to try to make this a good thing. We're still looking at the whole picture, a whole safety issue with the rest of the people, Mr. Stump. Um, you know, when you spoke at our first meeting, you talked about partnership, and why do you agree with this partnership? I, I, I can't imagine anyone here that would be against this project if we're, if we're asking about that intersection. I can't imagine anyone would disagree with that, if it was out on the other intersections. Yes, you know, I, I, I know you don't know the property there, that's why I'm disappointed, or supervisors, it's time to say, I have a, I have a huge, I have a project. Um, like they would do, like I said, an uphill path, or a solar park, or something like that. I, I still, like I said, I love your project, love the idea of your project, I think you're, you're thinking small, I think you should get bigger. Um, I just, I just think that that's not the same as what I thought. Do you have any comments, or does anyone have any recommendations of this?
I think. I promise to be great, my name is Roger Ledz, and I've known Stump for about ten years. I've lived within twenty-five miles of here for almost thirty years, never had the opportunity to be in this building. It's a good thing, I guess, but it's beautiful. But anyway, I, I just want to share with the board that Stump's been my neighbor for about ten years. The first thing that comes to mind for me when I say that, that thing, is integrity. They are conscientious, they are kind, they are generous, they're not good neighbors, they are great neighbors. And I just want to give you an example, a couple of years ago, they tore down their old little house on Good Lakes, and built a new one, it took two, three years to do. Within their property line, their home is within two and a half feet of my property. In that two or three years, my property was never littered, destroyed, in any way at all. They seem more conscientious about my property than they did their own home. And, and I think that's how they were handling the business, I feel. I know that neighbors are concerned, I know the integrity of this family, uh, they would really take good care of their property. Just want to share that too, thank you.
Thank you. Well, work. I will say that if you choose to send this to the board supervisors, I am not comfortable personally with the twenty-four acre plan.
There, so, if anyone else has come in on that? I would agree, I would think that I would be personally, you know, I'd build like the eight point eight, uh, census space, maybe I have a footprint. Um, excluding the eight point two.
Right. So we need to probably decide on eight point acres. You know, this continued discussion. Is that possible?
Okay, just a second.
Is it a twenty-four, yes, or no?
I have a question, you guys want to share, yeah, the rest of them moving forward. Twenty-four, eight point eight.
My thoughts on, are on it, you've got the twenty fours on the, that's what we have to ask for at this point. So I think you need to, to be careful on that, want to do something separate, say one, nine twenty-four. One is to vote, two, to review the nature, we're having a key problem with that, or if it's the twenty-four, we're asking, of course, we can't take that. Unless they answer the question.
If you, if you do the twenty-four, and if we would deny the plus, that goes to board supervisors. If we, if we use the twenty-four, nine twenty-four, full cycle, or eight, with the board supervisors.
I think, unless, unless the advocate decides to change to eight point eight, I think board supervisors are free to address the difference of application for this board, which is twenty-four acres. So I, I.
So rather than that.
Well, I mean, it, it, it could, it's still a recommendation, but, um, but I mean, this board could be ready, one option would be, we're not comfortable with twenty-four, but we'll lose. We're doing twenty-four, we're just saying we can deny it all, we'll approve all of them. I mean, I think that's a range of options in there. But regardless of which option was selected, I believe the board supervisor will have fully authority on application before this board, which is one, one way. But if this board were to approve eight point eight, it would have to be something for the board supervisor to consider, if they could supersede that, twenty-four, they want to. I'm going to ask for a, a decision. Um, I live in Eastern Florida, I live across the water, and we used to be located down next door to forehead door, four blocks here. And we were in a small location, and we moved out east of there, and there's three proper, three businesses there that would be considered spot zoning. So if you don't want me to vote, I, I vote not votes, because, you know, I don't want to be saying that they can't do it when I. So I, I don't have a conflict with you, Chris.
Well, you know, when Mr. Pearson brings up that statement, I mean, you guys are talking, I support, I support, it's like, we know prior to. So there are areas now that do appear as spot zoning.
Yeah, artists, here, because, like I say, it's out in, you, we are across the road from, I think, it's better than the soul there. We didn't build it with this bomb, so it can be, um, so, um, but whether, you know, I'm just asking you. My, 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 if you're purchasing a property, if you have any, or land, I think that has to be put out in the application, and you slide off, you'll find it.
I agree with what it would be at, um, just less than half my way, it's Trailer World, and also a, uh, a storage facility that's also commercial zone. So, I mean, I feel like that's a present now, right, you know, it's talking about.
The entrance is on two.
The entrance is different, yes, but it is like, you know. I don't know, in Western County, of what we would consider spot zoning, and a lot of those were in place before any of our zoning were in such a good play, and that's why, for, for me as a board, with our new zoning practices we have, we try to be nonchalant, try not to have, but that we absolutely have to. Because, yeah, to, to not just ourselves, but to anybody who's looking at our top line online, thinking they'd like to rent a business in Western County, and model it for, you know, a luxury system. Well, I guess it's just the proximity, my town is the proximity to other, all the commercial zone properties, maybe it's the, the usual spot zoning in my. Well, work.
Can I ask? I don't think it would be appropriate.
You know, and, and Mr. Stump, I'm in the audience, and I, I, I think, I don't think this, this is to be not a conversation about economic development. We all want economic development, we just want it to happen in the best way, that's what I mean, best for everyone in Western County.
Yeah, the, the reason I, I wouldn't is that I'm no longer a planner for the city, and typically, we would not try to be involved in these kinds of decisions that are charged to a plan itself, commission, and the board supervisors there. The discussion is appropriate, not what is the project's good, or saying it's a great project.
I'd like to apologize for my outbursts earlier this meeting, and I'll try to explain it by, except to say that feelings run deep on some of these issues, but Mr. Stump and Mrs. Stump, I apologize for my outbursts. One of the points that is, uh, hard to get over is the fact that Mr. Johnson, in this instance, is more than just a, finding zoning expert. He seems to have taken your side of this, or like that, and that, in my opinion, is not the position that a county commissioner should be. Should be neutral, but, uh, once again, I want to apologize for my outbursts, and we'll just.
Apology accepted, but I, I, I defer that particular point, it's funny, I think on the side of Western County, I don't think he's on our side, or your side. They're different, I guess, it sounds like. Um, I think he's just on, he's more developed, he's more broke in our county, he's more economics, and he's, and he's more investment in our county. I don't think that goes back to that, and that's, that goes to.
And, and with your comments, it draws me back to the letters of support that you received, and after reading thoroughly all the letters of support, um, which, which I think are, are great, um, but I, therefore, I'm not, we got all that side of it, not the actual location. Um, you know, however, they didn't actually mention the site, or they didn't actually mention the site. Um, but therefore, the economic development, we have tried to get straight.
Yeah, and the nature that is also for it, and the next one is for it, and for the site.
Okay, and that's, you know, that's, that's what we need to hear.
All of it, yeah. And, and, and they, they were all very excited, as I mentioned in their remarks, but they're all, um, you know, as far as, um, Mr. Friender, he actually decided that, actually, we explained what we wanted to do, we wanted to, you know, kind of inform, and teach somebody, represent that the state department would be there, see if they thought that was a good idea, and he was for it, and offered credit, but we're not fully connected, it's what's, you know, why last time?
Yeah, and that's our problem, is we, you're trying to, primarily, we're not in court, it's really forced, and questions aren't always making these decisions. Without some public input, we're that board supposed to kind of put together that public influence book, put it forward, um, like you said. And, and we all think that they're not developing, so this is, is wonderful, I mean, I've been talking about projects that are on the pipeline. However, our board is kind of really looking at the site.
Right, and the safety, and we trust that, you know, particularly, like, with that feedback that we can, with those people. So I guess if that's not, the experts have been there, you guys, then that's, that's what we, I guess.
For. Anyone want to link more?
What? What? Can I, the, uh, question?
You have a second? One second. More votes? So will be a yes or no, yes to deny it, no to not deny it, correct? I'll make sure we're clear. Okay, done?
Yes, deny.
Uh, Daniel?
Yes.
Any other? Cora?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Tommy?
No.
Berma? Seth, yes. Seven, yes. And my vote is sadly yes. I think Mark should vote. Our recommendation to the board supervisors will be to deny this request. And I, I still hope that the board supervisors, I know we have some other president, right? Will try to work together, um, try to do what you said about partnership. And try to stay in the platform of provision, hopefully in another part. Um, but it is ultimately their decision. And so I, but everyone in the audience know that, um, our, this is our recommendation to board supervisors that we will probably not have it until next Tuesday.
We'll have to talk to the board supervisor. We'll, we'll notice again. Feel free to comment at my office. I will, I'll whatever. We'll be established sometime by our
Alright, so, so watch your websites, check with, check with board supervisors. We have that.